Good evening. Thank you for attending the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council Thursday, April 11th. Is our custom to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Tonight it will be led by Councilperson Don Morris.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for the wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilperson Oller.
Here.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present. Thank you. Is our -- we have 30 minutes of comments by members of the public on non-agenda items. If you're not sure whether your concern is an agenda item or not, there are agendas up here on the front pew here, and you're welcome to come and get one. We do ask that you try to limit your comments for three minutes and that you state your name and your address before you speak. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? If not, we'll move on. Next item. Council. There are no corrections to the journal. Communication from the mayor. No communication. Reports from city officials. I do have one. I would like to welcome Kristi Howe from the Vigo County Public Library. They have been in the midst of doing an exciting strategic plan for their agency, and she's going to share some information with us about that tonight. Kristi, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me a little bit of your time this evening. As you may be aware, it is currently National Library Week, and we are celebrating libraries with our colleagues across the state. Libraries provide essential services in communities and have tremendous return on investment. So we appreciate you joining us in that celebration as we recognize the work that libraries do in communities across the state and the nation. Specifically tonight, I just wanted to bring your attention to our new strategic plan. This is a project that we worked on for about 10 months in 2018, rolling into 2019. And so that's this document that you have before you. Can also be accessed online if you go to the library's website, which is www.vigo.lib.in.us/plan. We'll specifically access this document for you. But like many of you who have been involved in strategic plans in the past, we went through a pretty extensive process. We did formal surveying as part of our plan. We also participated in roundtable activities. We sought input from community partners. And then because there are also so many other agencies doing planning in our community, we took advantage of opportunities to attend sessions being held by others, which really allowed us a nice way to hear from people who might not necessarily automatically respond or volunteer to participate in a library survey. For example, we were able to sit in on listening sessions conducted by the United Way of the Wall Bash Valley, have participated in strategic planning with the county parks department, with the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. So we really focused on listening to what the residents in our community were saying. And we heard a lot of concerns and a lot of really excellent things we're celebrating. People can feel a real sense of neighborhood at times in sections of our community, while other neighborhoods, you know, really expressed that that was lacking within their area within the county. We also heard from people who were concerned about jobs, unemployment in our community, that while unemployment may be down, we know that many in our community don't make what we might call a living wage, and they struggle to get by. We also heard residents talking about the desire to celebrate positive things in our community and to build community pride, to welcome differences of opinion, to welcome creativity and self-expression. And the library is really uniquely positioned as a nonpartisan organization within our community that serves everyone regardless of their age or their socioeconomic status. So what you'll see within that plan are three bold goals as well as some foundational goals as recipients of taxpayer dollars, working to make sure that we are maximizing that investment, looking at staffing, looking at operational costs, et cetera, but largely focusing on moving into the future. Your Vigo County Library is already recognized as one of the top libraries in the state and certainly one that has embraced a more progressive approach to library services, what we're calling a 21st century library, moving beyond simply providing resources and moving to a place where we can help people pursue what it is that they need to achieve to improve their lives. We want to help drive change within our community, and we have been successful in doing that over the last few years. Look forward to continuing to help move the needle within our community. So that's the biggest document that's in front of you tonight. One of the services that public libraries provide that is a little less expected or well-known is the work we do toward workforce development. So I've provided you with some information on the services available through the public library related to workforce development. We provide a lot of technology training at the library. We certainly do a lot to work with job seekers, but we also work with employers in the community as well. We provide a number of online courses that can be taken free of charge if you are a library card holder, and many of those have national accreditation for different professional continuing education opportunities. So that's a nice feature that we've been able to offer. It's also a great way for someone who has been in the workforce for quite some time to experience an online learning environment. I've been out of college for 19 years, and it wasn't online learning for me. So the opportunity to take a class for six weeks free of charge gives me a good way to reintroduce myself to the learning environment in this new online, you know, type of university. So it's a great way for people to get accustomed to that before pursuing an additional degree or certification in a more formal manner. We also do a lot in the partnership arena, specifically working with Launce Terre Haute to support small businesses and entrepreneurs within our community. And then the last document that I brought before you is designed to really just give you an overview of some of the services that we provide. In 2018, the Vigo County Public Library was named the Outstanding Library of the Year for the State of Indiana, and this document gives you an overview of some of the changes and enhancements that we've completed recently, as well as some of the programs and services that we provide to the community. It also contains letters of support from community members, including Mr. Devon, for recognizing the work that we do and the value that we bring to our community. I realize that you're a city council and we're a county library, but certainly our territory overlaps, and our most consistent communication is certainly with our library board. Typically then we communicate with the county council, and I thought it was important that we reach out to you as the city council with Terre Haute being the largest, you know, concentration of population within our county, so that you're aware of what we're offering to the residents of Terre Haute. Your constituents are our constituents as well. So at this point, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. I'd certainly like to encourage you to come pay us a visit if you haven't recently.
Any questions?
Kristi, I have served on the council for 15 years, and I can't remember anyone ever coming to tell us what's going on with the library. So first, I'd like to thank you for doing that. The library is one of the most important institutions in our city and our downtown. As the father of a two-year-old, we use the library all the time, and I really appreciate the great facilities that you have for little kids and youth.
Thank you.
I -- well, I guess I'll just stop there. I wanted to say we love our library.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you coming and sharing all the information that you've gathered up for us.
Thanks very much. Any other questions? Kristi, I'd like to thank you too. I've got still a little of what I would say, but when I moved to this meeting 30 years ago, 30-plus years ago now, I was to the library in the parks, were outstanding parks of the community that I noticed right away that has continued, and I just hope you will just continue on that path, and it's great to see that you're doing this planning to do that and affecting so many lives in our community. So thank you very much. Wish you well. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to talk? Are there any other reports from city officials? Not that I know of. Reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety? I did not receive any. Reports from standing committees? I don't believe there are any. Reports from non-standing committees? I don't believe there are any. Do we have any previously tabled items? No, we do not. Any tax abatements for confirmation? No. Items on second reading? We do not. Items on first reading? We have one. Great. Appropriation 3, 2019, $5,066 from Edit #0404 to demolish these buildings, number 432018.
Good evening. Steve Witt, Department of Redevelopment. This is the type of item we come to the council with quite frequently when we do a building demolition and a lane's placed against the property. If a lane is paid, then it goes to the City General Fund, so we'd like to have those monies re-appropriated so we can use it again for future demos and so on.
Two from the public would like to speak on appropriation 3, 2019.
Donald Hyde, Terre Haute, 14 Land Power. I came in late today, so -- but this is, again, on a subject I talked about last week. Seems like the county council is -- my city council is not taking on their responsibility on finding properties that they could acquire to then use to help solve other city problems. And all I hear now is the man's wanting the money back that they got for demolishing this one building so they can demolish other buildings. Yet I hear no detail of any of these buildings that are worth repairing. I hear none of this council ask any questions about, well, how bad are they, which ones are eyesore, which ones really dangerous? Or is it just, you know, yeah, it's an eyesore, but is it an eyesore that could be repaired and put back into use? You have a homeless problem? You right now are going to discuss tonight, or sometime soon, about this project where we're going to build this new thing and put up $10 million of city tax money, $10 million of county money, and $5 million of -- I haven't figured out where that comes from other than I know it's money paid by taxes by somebody. So in other words, it's out of money. Yet you don't ask where are the people that are in the offices that are going to have to move their offices from a five-story building? Every single office in that building is a government office. Several of them are county offices. Now, they pay rent there, maybe, yeah, but you don't look like you're planning on, what are we going to do when these people move? If we go through this and they build a place, they turn to one building that has all kinds of government offices in it into a hotel.
Mr. Hyde, the subject of this particular appropriation is just transfer of money for demolition of unsafe buildings. It's not the other matter that you're talking about, so if you could limit your comments.
All right. Well, my point -- but it is part of what I'm talking about as far as you're concerned, that you're going to give him back the money, yet you're not asking any reports from him about what they're tearing down or what they want to tear down, and could that be used for other purposes, other than our only solution is tear it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll respond to that if I could.
Okay, please.
And I'm sure Mayor Bennett will too. One very high-profile building I think that needs that criteria is the, what's now the Candlewood Suites. That was a building that was in very much in state disrepair, as you know. That was a public-private partnership to bring that building up to par. But the city building inspector can speak chapter and verse in regard to all of the buildings that we have that are on the list. The fact of the matter is, it easily costs more to bring them up to code than it does to build new, and if there's any way we can avoid tearing down a structure, we certainly do that. I don't want to speak on behalf of the Building Inspection Department. The mayor can, but demolition is the last resort, absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the council, sometimes it's important just to clarify things when misinformation is presented. We don't want to tear any houses down. I prefer not to tear any. We've got 356 on the list right now, and all of those need to be torn down. In order to bring them up to code, as Steve said, you're talking maybe a $30,000, $40,000 house. It's probably going to take $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 to bring it up to code. Once it's condemned, it has to be brought up to all building codes. Even if it just has a bad roof, all new electrical, all new plumbing, because that's what state statute requires us to do based on state building code. And so we don't own the house. We can't make somebody do that. If they don't fix it up, we have to tear it down. And in this particular case, as you all know, those funds are expended. We do get some back, and so we want to reimburse the pool so we can go tear down additional houses. We tore down 81 last year in the city of Terre Haute, and as I said, we've got 356 on the list right now. I get calls every day, people saying, "The house next door needs to be condemned," but we're not going to go just do that because somebody says it needs to be condemned. It's a very solid process. All of you are welcome to, you know, ask those questions of Dean in Redevelopment, who's the hearing officer, and/or our building inspectors, or any of us. So just want to make sure we clarify that. And just to touch on the subject that wasn't related to this, Madam President, those folks in a privately-owned building right now will be relocated by the owner of that building, so they will be taking care of it. It has nothing to do with local government. All be dealt private to private. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by the public on appropriation 3? Counsel?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I move we take action on appropriation 3.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by Councilperson Oller, that we take action on appropriation 3, 2019. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam President.
Yes.
If there's no further questions, I move we approve appropriation 3, 2019.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson Nation that we approve appropriation 3, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item in business, please.
Resolution 2, 2019, amending the Central Business District Urban Renewal and Tax Acquisition Area.
Good evening, councilmembers. Steve Witt, Department of Redevelopment. Resolution number two and three are kind of sister resolutions, so I thought I'd make some introductions, give a little bit of an overview, and I know Mayor Bennett would like to say a few words and so on. But we have several people here tonight. We have John Marvel, who's the president of the Capital Improvement Board, and Mayor Bennett's a member of the Capital Improvement Board, and I'm a member of the Capital Improvement Board. And we have our attorney, Brian Bosma. We have Vicky Weger from the county council, and Lisa Stetz from the county council. We have Lou Britton, who's our city redevelopment attorney. We also have Andy Mouser and Paige Sansone from Un-Maw. You know, it'd always be Un-Maw to me, Baker Tilly, the new name, but thank you guys for coming this evening. As I think everyone's aware, the Capital Improvement Board is considering a new convention center, and I've put a copy of a PowerPoint at each of your seats, but I'm only going to reference the first page. The Convention Center project, if you will, in quotation marks, consists of a 41,824-square-foot convention center facility, which is right there in the center. And then what I refer to as the east parking garage, the one over kind of the northeast of that structure, is a 458-space parking facility. Those two projects together, hard construction cost of $25 million. That figure goes back several years, probably at least four, when it was being discussed to do a partnership with ISU in regard to a convention center. And the plan then was for the city to perhaps contribute $10 million, the county $10 million, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau $10 million, or $5 million, I'm sorry, for a total of $25 million. Once it was determined that perhaps we need to look at a separate convention center project, we had to relook at the cost. We didn't know where it would sit on the block and where utilities were and all that sort of thing. So because of that, the total cost for everything is $32.5 million. That's engineering design, relocation of utilities, property acquisition, and things of that nature. So Resolution number two is in regard to tax increment finance funds that originally wasn't -- they weren't a part of the calculus, if you will, because it wasn't a part of the $25 million, but once we got to the $32.5 million, we realized that we were going to need some additional funds from tax increment finance as well as from food and beverage tax money. So just very briefly in regard to Resolution number two, this is in regard to amending our declaratory resolution for downtown tax increment finance area. And this is a multi-step process. It started with the City Redevelopment Commission last month approved an amending declaratory resolution. Then last week, it was approved by the Area Planning Commission. So tonight, we're here at the city council, and then should you approve it tonight, it would go to -- back to the Redevelopment Commission next week, where we'll have a public hearing, and then there would be final approval. And there are three primary components to that particular resolution. The first is the utilization of $3 million of tax increment finance funds that we have on hand, so there's no bond issuance involved in those monies or anything like that. And we would use that towards some of the upfront costs we're going to have, like property acquisition, which will be about $1 million, infrastructure relocations, things of that nature. The second thing is in regard to an annual pledge of $500,000 from TIF that will serve, in my layperson's terminology, a backup, if you will, to the city's pledge of edit to go towards the $25 million sum that I mentioned previously. And then separate but related to the convention center project is the third item, and that is in regard to the new hotel that's being proposed at what's the current state office building. And as you'll see from the schematic, there are two significant additions that would be built on the current state office building structure, and we anticipate capturing the net increase in assessed value created by those two additions, by the improvements to that hotel, and using that to issue bonds to fund the construction of what I call the west parking garage, which is the one just directly west of what's shown as the Marriott Courtyard. So in regard to Resolution number two, that's in regard to the tax increment finance component, and that's the $3 million TIF on hand, the $500,000 annual pledge as a backup, and then capturing the assessed value for the new hotel to help fund bond debt service for the west parking garage. And so I think with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Bennett and let him say a few words, and then we'll bring the professionals up.
Madam President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett, I just wanted to make a brief statement to kind of remind you of how we got where we're at today. About five years ago, we started this process of a discussion about a potential convention center as connected to Indiana State University's Holman Center. And as that project kind of worked its way through the system, you know, we needed funding sources, and you may remember opportunities that we went to the legislature, tried to create a sports district and tried to do some other things, and then we tried for the food and beverage tax and failed, but then when this last time, when we were able to get it approved, it was kind of the final piece of the puzzle. And so what this Resolution 3 is here, I know I'm ahead of it, but I just wanted to tie into what Steve had said. The purpose here is to commit the city to this funding over the next 20 years. And I just wanted to remind you that the last three years, we've put a half a million dollars in the budget that you've all unanimously approved, and we have spent some of those funds for legal fees and financial fees, et cetera, to date, but you've all been supportive of that $500,000 in the budget. One year, we reduced it to $250,000 since we weren't going to spend all that, but the other two years were $500,000. And so all this is now is making that long-term commitment so that in order to go out and bond, that says the city is making this resolution will say we stand by that. So I ask for your support on this resolution, hopefully unanimously, so we can move this project forward. So that's really all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Perhaps, Madam Chairman, how I'd suggest we proceed is perhaps we hear from the Baker Tilly folks in regard to the numbers, and then Mr. Bosma can explain the interlocal agreement, which is Resolution number three.
My name's Andy Mouser. I'm with Baker Tilly, formerly Un-Maw. I'm here with Paige Sansone in our office, and then we both work closely with Jason Simler in our office as well, who some of you may be familiar with. So before the meeting, I handed out a small packet of schedules, just a five-page summary of kind of what the financing could potentially look like, and then to kind of show you where the different revenue streams come in for the repayment of the convention center financing. So I will just walk through that quickly here, kind of starting out on page two, take a look at the project costs and funding. So Steve mentioned total all-in project cost of $32.5 million. Shown here is the $31.5 million. Only thing not included in this number is $1 million for land acquisition that's paid from Redevelopment Commission, TIF dollars. Other financing costs would include a debt service reserve surety. That's money that's set aside in case, really for bond rating purposes, in case monies were never there in a given year. That would provide protection to make sure the payment could be made until dollars would be found in a later year. So that's really for bond rating purposes, that that money's set aside. And then also, you can see the various financing costs. So total all-in costs of $32.5 million, again, not including that $1 million from land acquisition. And then down on the bottom half of the page, you can see where those costs are financed from. So right around $21 million would come from the general revenue bonds that would be issued by the county. The county also has contributed a little under $500,000 to various upfront costs, and then will be contributing about $5.25 million in upfront cost towards the project. The Convention and Visitors Bureau contributing around $1.3, $1.4 million upfront in monies that's already been contributed and monies that will be contributed as construction gets ready to commence. And then the city contributions, you've already paid about $164,000 for various engineering fees, other professional fees, and then additional contributions that would come prior to the bond issuance would be about $2.25 million. And that $2 million, the majority of it, would come from TIF on hand from the downtown area. So that, the $2 million that you do see here, and then the $1 million, again, is not included on the schedule, would be the total $3 million coming from the downtown TIF fund. And again, these bonds would be issued by the county. They would be payable from general revenues, but then also backed up by property taxes, and that's just to get the lowest interest rate on the bonds. So kind of with that, taking a look at page three shows, based on current market conditions and where we think the market could be this summer when bonds would be issued, based on assumed interest rates, you can see the total repayment of the full $21 million that would be financed, fully repaid over a course of about 18 and 1/2 years. And then on the far right column on that page, you can see your total annual payments. So in the first five or six years, payments around $1.8, $1.9 million, and then in later years, those payments decrease, and I'll kind of show why it's structured that way here in a second, but that, with the majority of the principal payback in early years, it helps keep financing costs down and keeps that repayment structure as short as possible. So your net interest costs, based on these estimated rates, would probably be around 3%, maybe a little bit above. So then page four kind of pulls it all together, where those debt service payments would be paid from county dollars, from CVB dollars, and then from city dollars. paid from county dollars, from CBB dollars, and then from city dollars, as well as food and beverage tax. So starting from the left and kind of working our way over, you can see the county contribution. The county's contributing around $5 million upfront, so then they would contribute another $4 to $5 million over the course of the next about eight years in the form of about $500,000 per year, and it's anticipated that that would be paid from the county's share of edit dollars as well. Convention and Visitors Bureau would pay about $250,000 per year all the way through 2033, with those dollars probably coming from innkeeper's tax dollars. And then the city contribution, your contribution would be in the amount of about $500,000 per year, Steve mentioned, with the final payment in 2037. And then that would be pledged from your TIF dollars, and the reason to have the pledge through the TIF is because it does not count against the city's debt limit, but then you do have the flexibility to use edit funds to make those payments. And then you can see in the final column, the food and beverage tax, based on the first five months of collections, we're assuming $1.7 million, but it looks like a full annual amount could come in, certainly above that, maybe more in the $2.1, $2.2 million range. And then I know on some of the preliminary estimates, I think we had looked at, we had kind of seen it in the $2, $2.5 million range. So this $1.7 million certainly is a conservative estimate. And then you can see those total revenues compared to the total debt service from the previous page. In the majority of years, even with those conservative estimates, it'll leave about $1.1 million in excess, and that's money for obviously cushion, and then could be used for things like operating the facility. So you can, you know, that page, I think, just really shows the $10 million from the county, how it's allocated, the $5 million from the CBB, the city's $10 million, and then also the $3 million that we mentioned coming from the Redevelopment Commission. And then the final page just takes a look at, as I just mentioned, the food and beverage tax collections. So we've seen five months of collections, right around $800,000. So converting that to an annual amount, that's, you know, hopefully right around $2 million. And there is a two-month delay on collections, so I think the April number, according to the auditor's office, hopefully will be right around $175,000, so pretty much in line with what you've seen in recent months. And then there certainly have been some fluctuations, but again, kind of going back to that two-month delay, some of those can be attributed to the holidays, to, you know, the cold weather, things like that. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions or anything else you...
Yes, the, page four, the two columns on the right, the illustrative revenue remaining column and the illustrative revenue beverage column, those seem to be pretty healthy excesses to me in ratios. Is there a certain target number you'd try to hit on something like this? And what will happen with that revenue remaining amount over time?
I mean, certainly it depends, you know, depending on what revenues are involved in the financings, you know, we see sometimes on TIF financings, revenues or coverage as low as 125%, things like that. But I certainly think 150% plus that is here is very healthy. And as I mentioned, those dollars are, could certainly be used towards operations of the facility and other purposes.
For operations?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Are you?
I think we will ask if there's any comments from the public before we go further with internal questions. So if there is anyone from the public with a question or make a comment about Resolution Two, and come up, and Mr. Similar, if you'll stand by, and if there may be some more questions for you.
Thank you for clarifying. Thanks for actually informing me for change. Why are you getting more confused? I thought it was the city council or the county, but apparently it's the state of Indiana, so in 2020, I will make sure that they hear from me on that. But going on, I have questions, and the first one, and I say this for every voter and taxpayer in the city and the county, that has not been explained, and I just listened to your finance people, unless I'm missing something or I'm not, there's some weird math. I believe we're paying for it and we're building it, therefore, the answer to my question should be simple. Who owns this building when we're done with it? It appears to me like Vigo County and the city of Terre Haute owns it. Now, I've been missed, I've been not understanding things. I believe that possibly private enterprise controls it. And if that's the case, I have a, I have some serious problems with that. The reason I want to know this, and I think the voters and the taxpayers want an answer to this, is because we need to know who's setting the prices. See, the owner of any building or any company sets the prices and how much money they want to take in. And that then sets the price of whatever we're at these rooms for, whether we have a party or something like that. If we own it, then we control that price. Yet I've heard no idea told to the public, one, what you're going to do with the building if you get it, and two, what the prices are going to be. Are we going to set them too high, and therefore, the building gets built with a lot of our money, a lot of tax money, and hardly gets used? And I can name in recent history, where the city built a building, and then all of a sudden, they build it too soon. If they had waited five years, and ISU would have brought in the doctors and knew they were going to bring in all these new students who were going to expand the college, that building would have been rented out, and the city would have held on to that property. But now, they built it too soon, and equate, they then sold it. And as far as I'm concerned, I can't see how it could have been anything but sold at a loss. Now, what, what met you, what I want to know is, are you sure this time round, that's not going to happen to us again, except this time, instead of being $7 million or whatever they paid for that building, I'm not going to mention it, you should already know it, the building I'm talking about, we're talking $25 million, plus the finances jumping up to $35 million. In other words, this building will be about four times the cost. We're using taxpayer funds, I've got no problem with that, I really don't. It's exactly what these gentlemen are here for, to make our community better. But what are we, what are the public getting for the money? Now, you've already, unless I'm wrong, and Mayor might correct me on this again, I hope he does, you're going to own it. The city council and the county council owns this property. You're going to set the prices, yet I've heard nothing about that at all to this point. Thank you.
Mr. Ray, I think you wanted to respond in part to that.
Madam President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. The CIV is a legal entity that has a partnership of three funding sources, and the CIV will own the facility. It's no different than the way Indianapolis is set up, where they own their convention center and their sports facilities. We were instructed through the legal process to make sure we set it upright, we own it, we will hire, the board will hire a company to make it on behalf, it will set the prices, we will control that, and we will own that asset as the CIV. There may be other things that come down the road after the convention center, but the CIV will own it. At no point in time did we ever think the convention center was really going to be $25 million. The $25 million number comes from our commitment. We had a 10, 10 and a 5 commitment. Now we know what the convention center's going to cost, and the funding to fill the gap comes from the food and beverage tax. And so we will own it, we'll control it, it doesn't have anything to do with the city council, the county council, other than appropriating the funds every year to make our commitment. Hopefully, that answers those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Is there any other member of the public who would like to make a comment about this I know Mr. Bosma wants to speak to us about Resolution Three, but we haven't formally introduced that yet. So I think we could proceed a couple of ways here, to continue talking about Resolution Two and handle it, and then introduce Resolution Three, or we potentially can introduce Resolution Three but vote on them separately. Can we do that? So Mr. Bosma can talk to us about that?
The city attorney's not here, so I'll say okay.
Yeah, well, I think these two are, these two kind of segue and affect each other, so it might be good to do that. So first, formally, Michelle, would you read Resolution Three?
Resolution Three, 2019, interlocal agreement for joint financing of the convention center.
Thank you. Mr. Bosma?
Thank you, President. Crossing members of the council, it's my pleasure to be with you this evening. Brian Bosma, the chairman of the municipal practice group at the law firm of Cogadis and Regus in Indianapolis. We are, we were engaged almost a year ago now as general counsel for the capital improvements board. It's been a pleasure to work with representatives of the city, the county, the convention and business bureau, and the redevelopment commissions to help to bring this project to fruition. Just a couple of items. Counselor Elliott, you asked about the leftover food and beverage. The, as part of the bonding process, the capital improvements board had to estimate the shortfall for operations for the convention center that would be funded by food and beverage taxes. It's approximately, at this point, $500,000. That was the estimate. That was based on an average of seven separate facilities of approximately the same size, so it's really a scientific wild guess. But the CIV is engaging an operations consultant to help it hone those figures much more closely. So that is underway, but that is in part the answer to your question. So if you reduced each of those numbers annually by $500,000, that would be the current estimate of excessive food and beverage. The mayor's absolutely right. The capital improvements board, the Vigo County Capital Improvements Board is formed by ordinance of the county, but by agreement with the city and the convention and business bureau, the city, the convention and business bureau, and the county each have appointees to it. It is a separate legal entity from the county, separate legal entity from the city, and although it is somewhat part of county government, it's as the auditor, as its fiscal officer, et cetera, it is a separate legal entity and will own and operate the facility. So one of the first things I noted when we were brought on board was that there had been a gentle person's handshake on financing, but no real documentation. So for the end of the year, this past year, we entered into the executive of each of the participants in a multi-party agreement that just really set forth the levels of funding that are shown in the interlocal agreement, and sort of pledged to take to their respective legislative bodies a formal interlocal agreement to formally provide for the funding mechanism for the convention center, primarily through the issuance, supporting the issuance somewhere in the area of $21 million, no more than $22 million, general revenue bond issue by the county. For the interlocal agreement, first of all, Andy did an excellent job of walking through the illustrations of financing. If you have the interlocal agreement for you, it just states these same relationships in a different way. You're free to agree the excellent legal document throughout, taking attention to page five, article five, the financing clearly states that the county will contribute $10, $10 million, the city $10 million, the development commission $3 million, the convention and business bureau $5 million. And because we don't know the exact cost of construction, we have to estimate, they're ready to go to bid, they didn't want to do any of that, so the interlocal was formally adopted by the city and county. Before bidding occurred, the shortfall would be somewhere around $5 million, so that will be made up by food and beverage tax pledged by the capital improvements board. So then the exhibit is where the real action is. This is each of the participants' commitment to finance the project. And Exhibit B is Vigo County's financing plan, $200,000 or $500,000 per year, $250,000 per six months. And the commitment down in item three to issue the general revenue bonds in the approximate amount of $22 million also acknowledges for each of, the county is in addition, making part of its contribution right up front to reduce the cost of the bond. It actually eliminates a second, the requirement for a second bond issue, which would only have been benefit to the professionals and not to the public entities. So that one-time upfront cash infusion, half of their $10 million, removed the requirement that a separate bond issue due to the county's debt limitation was eliminated with that. Exhibit C walks through the city of Terre Haute's financing plan. Steve explained it. Andy walked through the illustration on it, and it does include the $3 million from the downtown allocation fund, which is you're considering under Resolution Two, and the issuance of the redevelopment bond issue that Steve mentioned also. The convention and visitors bureau is much more straightforward. It's just a $250,000 cash contribution every year through 2033. And then Exhibit E states what the Vigo County Capital Improvements Board will do, which is essentially make up the difference through food and beverage tax. Very happy to walk through any portion of this that you have questions about, but I'll defer to you, Madam Chairman, or Madam President, to point us in the right direction.
Is there anyone else from your group that wanted to make a statement before we finish? Thank you. Is there anyone from the public in addition who would like to speak on, I think, either Resolution Two or Three?
Good evening, thank you. Lisa Spence-Bennett, 220 Barton Avenue, Terre Haute County Councilmember. I just thought of a question that I didn't have a chance to ask, anything to ask, when these gentlemen came before the county council, if I may ask that. I've not been in Terre Haute for a huge amount of time, but we've had one significant, at least one significant, construction project that went significantly over budget. What would happen if this project goes over budget? How would the dollars be handled in such a case? Is that something we can talk about now? Thank you.
The capital improvement board will engage, has engaged, actually, all professionals on the, on the project. They have Garmong, local firm, is their construction manager. It will be their job to continually estimate costs through this. The $31,500 construction and professional cost is based on their $25 million hard construction cost estimate. As items are bid, as this is bid, when all parties have approved the interlocal agreement, we know firmly that each public entity is on board. They will bid the project if it should bid at an amount that's greater than the available funds. They will do what they call value engineering. They will reduce the scope or the quality of some aspect of the project, maybe change finishes on the floor, whatever it may take, smaller footprint, if it has to be, different fixtures, this type of thing. So it's not atypical for, for a initial bidding process to be over the available funds. You can't spend more than you have. So they will value engineer it under the decision-making authority of the capital improvement board to bring it within budget.
Thank you.
I'm listening and paying attention raises a couple of questions. Again, this is on the finances. Now, from what I understand, unless I'm understanding it wrong, they're planning to pass the ordinance that puts the city, the county, and this other group on the line for the financing of this building. And my problem is this, I still have not heard anybody, including you guys, mention how you're going to determine the prices you're going to charge when we build the building. And I'll tell you why that's important. We're going to have that building go. Let's just say everything's happened, everything's perfect, and in 2026, the building is open, and we're going to rent out space, we're going to try and get people to fill it up so we can make back the money we spent to build. Okay? Here's the thing, in 2026, we are legally bound by the city, county, and this other group to pay millions of dollars... group to pay millions of dollars each year, whether we have it or not, whether that place is making money or not. I think that we ought to have an idea of what's coming in and how much of that building's going to be rented out in those years until it's paid off. Now, once it's paid off, then you're going to lower the prices, you can keep that place going. Now, the reason I point this out, the reason I'm thinking this, is let's look at the Indiana Theater. They spent a lot of money, and now this is private money, so it's not fund money, and they refixed it, they made it look great. Now, the city has hit them for back taxes, I don't know what it is, but the bottom line is this, they, a group controlled what prices they charged for the people that met in that Indiana Theater, and what they did there, good, bad, or indifferent. But they could not make enough money, or they didn't pay their taxes enough to keep up. I'm just concerned that we're not getting enough information on what we're building and how much money we're going to be taking in from it. Because you're, they're not talking, it's like playing a poker game. Everybody's played poker at one time or another in their lives, even as kids, and there's no money involved. You got a hand, and you're playing nickel, stone, four fifty cents. Rich people can afford 50, 100 buck losses, more than that, they want to. But here's the thing, you're gambling with $10 million from the city, $10 million from the county, and $5 million from the subject group. If we're spending that kind of money, we have to have more intelligence on what we're going to be able to get out of the building so that we don't get stuck paying for something that we're taking a loss on. I think that's fair. I think there's some questions yet need to be answered. I don't mean to put it off for whatever, but there's some questions that need to be asked and answered. Thank you.
Mr. Witt?
Just a couple of things. The marketplace determines pricing. It's not necessarily the owner. The owner can set whatever price they want, but if it's not competitive in the marketplace, ultimately, that'll determine the success or failure of whatever goods or services being sold. But another member of our CIB group is David Patterson of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And David will tell you that our community, time and again, has had to pass up opportunities for the, what I would call the smaller to medium-sized conventions and group meetings that take place in other parts of the state because they have facilities similar to what we're proposing. And a good example I like to use is local government. There's the Association of Indiana Municipalities, there's the Association of Counties, I'm sure there's, there's probably a city clerks group, there's a municipal attorneys group, I'm sure there's probably groups for city councils, and so on and so forth. There's an economic development group. Just using local government as an example, those professional groups usually meet on a quarterly basis all around the state, and they never come to Terre Haute and Vigo County because we don't have adequate facilities to host those groups. So those are the types of groups we're looking to host. The Convention Center is designed to seat 1,000 for a sit-down meal. The space can be configured in a host of different ways to host multiple groups at the same time. We think other non-business-related, if you will, like weddings and things like that, there'll be a large demand for that. And frankly, it's going to be one of the nicest spaces around. And one of the things we haven't talked about yet is the Larry Bird Museum. That's going to be a 2,500 square foot space. Much of it will be two stories, it'll be open. All of Mr. Bird's artifacts will be coming there, and we have some other ideas for the use of some of the common areas, and we think that's going to set our Convention Center space apart from some of the other communities that we would compete with around the state for functions and so forth.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then we'll turn inward. Are there any comments or questions about any other members of council? Mr. Nasser?
I just want to reiterate what Steve had talked about with the events in our community and the fact I'm a board member of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've been on there for over 20 years now, and we have increased each year the amount of revenue we get with innkeeper's tax. And we're at the point, like Mr. Witt says, that we are basically, we don't have some of the facilities to bring other events into our community. So there is a need for this in our community, especially with the Apple Club or Holiday Inn closing their facility, that we are turning a lot of events away. And people might always use that argument that there's nothing to do in Terre Haute, there's nothing that's going to bring people here, but it's the middle of April, and this weekend, you can't get a room in a hotel because we have stuff going on. So there is a need for this. I think we need to be, as a community leaders, explaining how this all works with different pieces to the puzzle, if you will, with the financing and so forth. But I think it's a great project that, you know, with the CVB, the city and the county all working together to bring a project where we could have just folded after it didn't work with Indiana State University. So I'm very supportive of the project. And if there's no other questions or comments, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2019.
Second discussion.
They moved and seconded, moved by Councilperson Nasser, seconded by Councilperson Morris, that we approve Resolution 2, 2019, discussion, Councilperson Nation.
Thanks, Martha. I have a couple of questions about this. We're talking now about Resolution 2, right?
Correct.
Okay. You have Resolution 2 before you, you'll see on the second page, under section 7, near the bottom, there's a place where there was a line that somebody needed to fill in a number, and the number's $18 million. I'd like a clear explanation of what that $18 million, is that $500,000 a year for 10 years, plus $3 million up front, plus $4.5 million?
That's exactly right, Todd. The, we've got a good handle, obviously, on the $3 million and the $500,000 a year, but the proposed new hotel is still under design, that's a little bit of a moving piece. And I know we've worked a lot with Paige and Andy's colleague, Jason, and to try to, and I know he's doing work to try to estimate what the net increase in assessed value will be to those improvements. And then that'll be a function of how much we can, we would have to work with in terms of net increase in assessed value for bond debt service on what I'm calling the West Parking Garage.
So with Resolution 2, what we're doing is pledging $18 million of tax income and finance money over the next 10 years. Is that a correct characterization?
That's, that's correct. That's an estimate. I wish I could give you a solid number on the West Park, the new hotel's going to generate X, and thus, we have this much to spin on the West Parking Garage. We're not quite to that point yet. So in talking with Jason, the $18 million is the figure that we came up with that we thought was a good figure to use.
Edit money has been mentioned in a way that's confusing to me. Edit could be used to pay instead of TIF. Explain how that might work or what you're really saying there.
I may defer to Andy on that and to the mayor. The idea is to utilize Edit, but over the life of the bond, it's difficult to predict what future mayors want to do, what future councils want to do, and so on, in regard to the annual budget. And secondly, I think it's a function of the bonding capacity of the city as well. And, but I'll turn that over to Andy and let him...
Steve, isn't, aren't we talking about the bonding capacity of the redevelopment commission?
No, no, and that's a question for Andy. But, well, we are now, but previously with Edit, we were just talking about the bonding capacity of the city.
What I'm trying to confine this to is Resolution 2, which is before us, which says that we're going to spend $18 million of downtown Edit money over the next 10 years. And I'm sorry to bring, I realize I confused it by bringing Edit into it, but I'm confused about what real Edit might play in paying that money.
Madam President, members of the council, Mayor Dick Bennett. So we're committing $500,000 of Edit money, but it'll be backed up with the TIF funds. We have, and it has to do, and we'll let even our legal counsel explain, by backing it up, then that helps us from the bonding perspective. And so we're still going to, we're not paying it twice, we're not doing it twice. Is that kind of where you're...
Next question.
Right. I thought that's might, where you might be going. We're backing it up with that, and they structured this in order to make it fit into the bonding capacity, which, I mean, it's pretty common. There's nothing unique about it, it was a way to make sure that we would be backed up, because if I'm not reelected, somebody else comes in and says, you know what, I don't like this project, and so they don't propose a budget to the council. And once again, we're getting into semantics here, but you guys can't create a budget, the mayor has to, and let's just say they don't like the Convention Center, and they say, I'm not putting the money in there, then we'll have to find another way to deal with it. TIF would back it up. I'm hopeful that that will never happen with anybody in the future, but that's what this agreement is about, to hold us to that. And the TIF will back that $500,000. So we're talking about committing 10% of our income, of our, you know, Edit income for the next 20 years, each year.
So that's your intention as mayor, is to pay this with Edit?
Yes.
Is that what you're stating?
Yes.
And then if that doesn't work, or if there's a change in leadership, then we've already got the paperwork in place that says the redevelopment commission will pay it from downtown TIF funds?
Yes. So it is a little confusing. I knew where you were going, because it's like, it sounds like it's a double...
I didn't expect it to be double.
Right, but it could be. Somebody may think that.
Just trying to understand. And...
Does that make sense now?
It makes more sense.
Okay. It's fair.
So, okay, we're still on Resolution Number 2. There's also been, as part of the dizzying discussion about numbers here, the characterization that you didn't know how much it was going to cost, start at 25, now it's going to cost 32 and a half million. So there's a 7.5 million difference. As I look at the schedules that you've presented and listen to the characterization of what we're collecting in food and beverage taxes, am I right that the estimate on food and beverage is a little over $2 million a year?
Yes.
Okay.
But can I just say one other thing, Councilman? It's 25 million plus the 3 million from redevelopment, so your gap is 28 to the 30 number.
Okay.
There's 10 coming from the city, there's 3 coming from redevelopment, 10 from the county, and 5 from the convention tourism. Okay?
I guess...
Right. Yeah.
Mr. Bosma mentioned that the approximate shortfall for operations is estimated to be about half a million dollars a year?
Is that what you...
Okay. And Mr. Elliott pointed out that on page 4 of this packet that we have, which is a schedule, it shows coverage ranging from 373%, which is actually very high, and it's right here in the very beginning, but it tends to be more in the 175% range-ish over the course of the whole bond issue. When we've talked about bond issues in the past, most of the coverage ranges that we've struggled for, that we strive to maintain are closer to 125%, aren't they?
That would be a minimum.
A minimum.
That would be lower than 125.
So is the idea to have 125% plus half a million dollars to cover the operating shortfall, is that what you're shooting for?
Well, the operating income, as I indicated, is a, it is a complete estimate at the moment. It was based on our owners representative, Nation's Group, which does conventional work all over the country, taking the actual costs, most recent costs, for seven real facilities located in similar cities of similar size, and literally taking the average. So there was a lot of caveats when this was, when this was circulated, which had to be statutory for part of the bond process in the county. So they are in the process of selecting a consultant operations expert. No one in the CIB, none of their other consultants are operations experts to hone these figures. They feel confident that this is reasonable, reasonable estimate, that they want to hone those figures very closely. And they, yes, they do want to maintain at all times at least 125%, but then operations have to come out of that, food and beverage tax, and future improvements. There has to be refreshing of these facilities. You can't just build them and they last for 25 years. You have to constantly upgrade and refresh, so I've been told, and that also would be coming out of the food and beverage and hopefully operations.
Okay.
May I clarify one other thing?
Sure.
Back to the pledge. So let's be abundantly clear that the county is fully obligated on the 21 or 22 million dollar bond issue. So the pledge from the redevelopment commission is to address just what you and the mayor indicated, that if some future council decides, no, we're not giving those guys money anymore, the county is literally on the hook for all revenues plus property tax backup for the full amount of those bonds. So the, while the participants in the CIB were uncomfortable with just, okay, well, we'll do this in the future, we'll be literally subject to future appropriations. So the pledge from the redevelopment commission solved all anxiety among the professionals and others in that regard on how to be sure to make that contribution. And one more is, again, just to help clarify, there, it's been, not by you, but people have said, oh, this 25 million project has skyrocketed to 31 million. The 25 million was the city's, the county's, and the convention visitors bureau original pledge to the home and center project, with ISU making, you know, the difference and it being located, I believe, on ISU property. When ISU stepped out of the project and the three participants, including the city, continued on their own, they had to have a standalone facility. And so the estimated construction costs, hard construction costs, are still 25 million. There's just additional architects and construction managers and other professionals and fixtures also that are in there to take that to the 31 and a half.
Which is over 20% for soft costs, right?
So the, I'm sorry, this wasn't circulated to you all, I don't know that we provided it. It was provided to the county for their bond issue purposes. Let me get to it here. I can give you the... Oh, here it is. So the, no, that's not it. That's it. So the design and professional fees are 3 points, estimated 3.6 million. The hard construction costs are just a smidge under 25. Furniture, fixtures, and equipment are estimated at 1.5. That's a total of 30 million and change. And then there's always a project contingency. For instance, we are aware that there's, you wouldn't believe this, the history of the site was really quite fascinating for an ex-environmental engineer. It was a winery, it was, had oil wells on it. Some of you may remember some of these things, maybe not, just kidding. It was a tannery, breweries of all kinds. I don't know what was going on over here in Terre Haute, but that was a, that was a happening spot. So we actually just got back a Phase 2 investigation, which indicated they didn't discover anything disastrous, but there will be, for instance, in any project of the size, when you're excavating in an urban area, you're going to, you're going to uncover things that you've got to take care of. So with the 1.5 million contingency, that's also a construction contingency, that's 31,500,000. And then at this, the budget that will circulate specifically excluded property acquisition... excluded property acquisition, that was the approximately one million dollars that Mr. Witt referenced.
Thanks for that level of detail.
Yeah, sure.
That helps.
Oh, actually, Counselor, I'll give you this, it's an extra copy.
Oh, sure, thank you.
This is part of the capital improvement board's revision of the resolution.
As, as I look at these numbers and try to understand what the city is likely to pay, I'm wondering if food and beverage tax ends up coming in so much more significantly higher than we've estimated, is anybody, does anybody pay less, whether it's the city, or the county, or the CIB?
Yeah, I...
Or the...
No, no, please, enlighten us.
...nominate. Mr. Selmore, when he circulated in that estimate, oh, that's on the illustration from Baker Tilly, he clarified, what month did that go through? Did it go through March?
Yeah, March of two thousand and nine.
February, apparently February, March, for whatever reason, wouldn't be the months that I would pick to have more food and beverage receipts than other months, but the months that are on that list tend to be the highest months. So, he's trying to be conservative. If you extrapolate, it looks like one point seven million dollars, but that's not guaranteed because later months in the year do not generate generally, looking at other communities, the food and beverage tax at the months that were illustrated there.
Well...
And I'm no expert on that, I'm just, I was sitting in a meeting when he said that.
I'm certainly not an expert either, but I'm trying to understand the representations that have been made in this meeting, and what I think I get is that we're looking at an average of about one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a month, roughly. You know, February was two hundred and fourteen, almost two hundred and fifteen, so, you know, there's your high number, or whatever, and I, that brings it up to two point one million dollars a year. And my question is, if all of these numbers are predicated on us only collecting one hundred and seventy-five, or on collecting less, and we actually collect more, then what happens to that extra money? Does it...
It will be, it will be in the capital improvement board fund. It will be used to maintain the facility, it will be used to, the bonds are actually pledged there, I suppose the capital improvement board, I'm sorry, the county could at some point choose to redeem the bonds. We don't know what kind of redemption provisions that will be, that will be bid, but that capital improvement board fund can be used for operations, improvements, it could be used for other capital improvements, if a project came up, but it would be used solely for those purposes, statutory, statutory, those are the only purposes it could be used for. The ten, ten, and five were, I wasn't around for this, this predated me by a long time, but those were the pledges, the public pledges that were made to the project, and those were maintained consistently, along with the addition from the RDC.
Okay. I, again, staying on Resolution Two with Exhibit A, it's two sentences, projects added to the original plan. One, improvements related to the new Vigo County Convention Center, and two, improvements in support of a new hotel and parking garage to serve the convention center. I know that we get in, we'll get into this more with Resolution Three, but those improvements that we're talking about, I mean, it calls out the new parking garage. I know from reading Resolution Three that we are pledging to bond at least four and a half million dollars to affect the construction of that facility. Is that correct?
Just to make sure we all understand, the Resolution Two, the parking garage referred to there is the west parking garage.
Okay, so it's the hotel parking garage?
Correct. The inter-local agreement just contemplates the convention center project that I talked about, which is the convention center proper and the east parking garage.
Okay, so I was confused about that. Now, again, confining ourselves to this, the improvements in support of a new hotel and parking garage to serve the convention center. So we're talking about the west garage. How might we be supporting a parking garage that the private sector is paying for?
Well, the same way we did virtually every other project we've done in the downtown, Todd, it's kind of a separate but together issue. The convention center project is contemplated by the inter-local agreement, is the convention center itself, and the east parking garage is just, as I mentioned, but we see an opportunity for another hotel downtown, largely as a result of the convention center. It's my understanding that the Hilton Garden Inn and the Candlewood runs at eighty-five-plus percent occupancy, and so we feel like there's demand for that, and that demand is going to be driven largely by the convention center. So, the Resolution Number Two is a bit of a hybrid because it contemplates TIF assistance for both the convention center project again, and the west parking garage, so that's a little bit of, takes both of them into consideration, and the inter-local is just for the convention center project and east parking garage.
Okay, so we're not just talking about supporting a convention center in this resolution, we're talking about supporting a privately-owned parking garage and privately-owned hotel?
If I can, Counselor. I don't, while it says related to the hotel, I don't believe there's any RDC funds, I've not been to a meeting, so I don't think there are any RDC funds that are anticipated to actually be used on hotel construction. They will be used on garage construction, and there may be utility amenities related to that, but the construction of the hotel is on its own. So it's anticipated, and again, Steve referred to this, and Baker Tilly has not completed its calculations yet, but it is anticipated, and wouldn't be out of the ordinary at all, that the property taxes created by the parking garage would self-fund that improvement. Those discussions have not been completed with the hoteliers at this point.
Don't you mean that the, that the improvements to the hotel would fund the parking garage?
Yeah, also, yeah. Both, yeah.
They'll both be paying taxes.
Okay. The parking garage will be paying taxes.
There's some discussion about that, but anticipated, yes.
Well, that's, that's one of the next questions, is who's going to own this garage?
Redevelopment Commission will own the garage during the outstanding bonds, and then customarily, it's turned over to the person who has built it, and that would be the hotels.
Okay.
And I've met with the RDC's bond lawyer just to discuss portions of this. Steve, or the RDC attorney may know better than I.
Okay. You know, I attended a forum earlier this week for people who want to sit on this council, and I think everybody on that dais, at one point or another, mentioned transparency as part of their comments. And I've been on this council, as I mentioned before, for fifteen years, and this is anything but transparent. These numbers appear at the meeting, we're asked to vote on them tonight, and although I'm, this is happening in my district, and I'm supportive of it, I'm struggling to understand the complicated and apparently as-yet-not-quite-finished plans that we're being asked to approve. I'm not saying I'm not gonna vote for it, but this is not transparency in government. And with that, I'll yield and call the question. We can move on to Resolution Three, start over.
Is there any additional discussion on that?
Yeah, just, just refresh our memories here. What size of group, largest size of a group meeting can we have in this town, and what facility would that be at, now, excluding Home and Center?
Perhaps the mayor fits for that. Yeah.
Can you give us an example?
You know, the AFL-CIO convention here for, and three hundred people for four days at Holiday Inn, when Holiday Inn decided to lose their space, and they could find no other opportunity to put three hundred people in the same hotels, if you will, in the same complex, and put them in a one room at a time. So, for things in that hundred to three hundred range probably, that we can't accommodate. There's just nowhere to, because everybody wants to stay in the hotels and have common space, where you have breakout rooms, and you can bring everybody together in a single room for dinner or lunch, whatever. There are no facilities like that in Terre Haute.
Okay.
And I knew that number was, you know, relatively low. Couple of community residents I know whose daughter's getting married in May, or May or June, they're having the wedding in Carmel, because there's a space there that's large enough to handle it. They can't handle the crowd that they intend to, tend to have. And this convention center can handle up to a thousand, the proposed?
Seated for dinner.
Seated?
A thousand.
Significantly larger than two fifty. I've also had, several times, I've had the opportunity to ask Dave Patterson, Dave, tell me about it, do we have the demand? Oh, yeah, yeah, I have to turn down things all the time, because we don't have the space large enough to fit, we don't have quality space large enough to fit the number of people that want to, want to come, so. I yield.
David, do you want to comment about Earl's question?
I was gonna answer Earl's question from the Chamber of Commerce perspective. Madam President, Members of the Council, David Haines, resident of Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce. We have an annual meeting that's generally in the neighborhood of seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred. George, you might be able to comment on how many plates you've served at them in the past years. With the renovation of Home and Center last year, we had our dinner at an airplane hangar on the, at the one hundred and eighty-first, and for those of you who were in attendance, it turned out to be a wonderful event, but we really had no alternative for a dinner of that size. The other thing I would mention to you is, I'm a member of the Indiana Chamber Executives Association, and in the last year, I've been asked to host their annual meeting, and in hopes that all that you're talking about here today, and all that these folks have put together for us to consider and for you to consider, I told them, give me two years and we'll have a place for it. So, that's just to add to what Steve said earlier about organizations that are looking for places to meet, and as a chamber president, I certainly would want Terre Haute to always be an option for those, those folks. Thank you.
I just have to say, I'm disappointed to hear that it's believed that perhaps we haven't been transparent with our figures. I will say one thing, after thirty years of working in economic development in the community, for one thing, this is the first project I've ever been involved with that has four distinct fiscal bodies and units involved with it, so that's, that's new ground for us. Secondly, as far as the Department of Redevelopment aspect, that is relatively new to the discussion, probably within the last two months. And as soon as I knew about that, Todd, I met with you and Martha to bring you up to date the best I could on it. I took time out of my schedule, I wanted you guys to be informed. The CIB meets every month, you're always welcome to come to our meetings. You know where my office is, you can call me at any time, so I just find it disappointing when you say, you guys aren't being transparent, we don't know what's going on. Well, I think there's some responsibility as council members to learn and task as well, and don't just put all that responsibility on us. We're doing the best we can with a very complicated project. We don't have to do a convention center, you know, none of us is gaining anything by it. We're trying to improve the community, and to say that we're not being transparent is to imply that we're trying to hide something, or something of that nature, and I find that very offensive.
I'm sorry you're offended by that, Steve. You point out, you point out that you're new to this within the last two months, and that's one of the things that is confusing to me.
I said the redevelopment aspect, David.
No, no, the redevelopment aspect, that's what I mean, the Redevelopment Commission, and the commitment of millions of dollars of downtown tax increment finance district over the next ten years. We've been talking about this project for two years, more than two years, and the financing part of it seemed, well, just to put it simply, didn't involve the redevelopment, any TIF money until two months ago. That's the part that is frustrating to me, is not the fact that you've figured out how to make it work, in fact, I applaud you for figuring out how to make it work, because I don't want the project to go away, but the, to go from working with four entities, one of which was ISU, to three entities, and to, and then to carry on, soldier on for a couple more years without that, and then to add redevelopment money, or downtown TIF money, at the very end, is, well, confusing. And I'm someone who's trying to understand it, and as you mentioned, was briefed by you on, with the information you had at the time, which has changed since then, and I apologize for not following up to get better info, or more current info. Now, I'm getting it at the meeting, where I'm being asked to vote on this. That's the basis of my comments, it's not meant as a personal attack on you. I think that you've done a great job with a hand, in playing a hand that probably not very many of us would want to have to play. As I indicated before, I'm supportive of this project, but I, it's very hard for me to understand all of this stuff, the nuances of it, and especially the nuances of the financing deal that are being presented to us tonight, and what I really am trying to get to the bottom of, from my own information, and I've gotten pretty far in this questioning, is what impact is this gonna have on the downtown TIF financially over the next decade? What are we committing to? Because I represent most of the downtown, most of that downtown TIF is in my district, so it's not like a crazy, from-nowhere set of questions. I want to know what's gonna be left over to help with other projects, and to continue to do the work that we've done for years with the downtown TIF. I'll stop there, but let me keep talking. Yeah?
I just wanted to ask, and this was gonna be the question I was gonna ask, what does the downtown TIF generate now?
So, we're in the process of updating with twenty nineteen values, but looking back at last year's reports, pull this up real quick, in twenty eighteen, the downtown TIF area generated right around one point six million dollars. A portion of that goes to the Candlewood Suites, those projects, a portion goes to the nine twenty-five Wild Ash project, a portion goes to the Dimming project, so there's about one point three million outside of those kind of self-supporting projects this generated, and of that one point three million, you've got just under two hundred thousand dollars in debt service payments that those are obligated to. So your downtown TIF area still generates, and that's again based on twenty eighteen values, not including any growth from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, and then not including future growth that you could see from any new development, roll off of abatement and things like that, you're still generating one point one, one point two million dollars of surplus per year. I believe at the end of twenty eighteen, it was maybe... I believe at the end of 2018, it was maybe 5.1 million in cash on hand. So that's where the 3 million would come from, is from existing cash on hand, not from your 2019 collections.
And this will increase the projected increase of TIF? Or does not?
I don't, I guess, have an estimate of that at this time. With...
That's what I'm talking about, yes.
Correct, that's 2018.
No, I understand that. Do you have a projection of what that would, with the hotel, and we know?
I know we're currently working on an estimate for the hotel, but I do not have that with me here tonight. I think with just everything being still in design, I don't have an estimate.
But it's going to have to total more than 1.8 at some point in time, is that correct? Am I looking at this correct? I don't know.
For total TIF for your downtown area?
Because isn't that what you're committing here as a backup or whatever you said that was? So wouldn't it have to generate that much to be, to have that backup?
Well, I know that's what I'm trying to get at. I understand.
I'm just trying to get where, you know, people understand, we understand, that that still will generate enough and hopefully leave enough excess to do other project if needed. Include, I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to get to all that. That's what I'm, that's what I want clarified if possible, so that we know that it's not going to just be the TIF gone and it's just for this, you know, that backup, we can't use it for anything else. But there's nothing else left, is what I'm trying to get.
Right. Of that 500,000 that's pledged a year, you've got currently about 1.1 million that could be used towards that. And then, as I mentioned, there's some of the Candlewood Suites and 925 Wild Ashes, those obligations go away, it'll grow to 1.4 million, 1.6 million later years. So it'll continue to grow on top of any other development.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you so much.
Certainly.
Thank you.
If I might, Todd, the way this, the way the Redevelopment Commission got involved, and I don't know that it's become clear, but the way the Redevelopment Commission got involved was that when the interlocal agreement went to the county, the county was concerned about the city's pledge of edit money, because that pledge put them at or above their debt cap. They were at their debt limit, okay? The Redevelopment Commission, TIF revenues are not subject to the debt limit. So the Redevelopment Commission can pledge those $500,000 annual revenues in lieu of the city payments that were originally pledged for their $10 million share. The city has indicated that they will reimburse the Redevelopment Commission annually the $500,000 that it is pledging toward the county's bond obligation. But they cannot, what the city cannot do, is pledge that to the Redevelopment Commission, because then they violate the terms of their constitutional debt limit. So what we've, what we've tried to do is get around to that constitutional debt limit issue on the city's $10 million pledge and keep the project afloat. Without the city's $10 million pledge, the county, without a pledge from the city, the county is clearly and justifiably uncomfortable with getting on the hook for the entire $21 million. So this is just a way to assure the county that the $10 million originally pledged by the city will be there to back up that part of the $21 million debt they're incurring. Does that help?
It does, thank you, Lou.
Hi, Vicki Wager from 3505 Ohio, the council representative for the 3rd District. And the convention center is in my district, which is a good part of the east side of Terre Haute. I wanted to say that there, I spent a lot of time at the CIB meetings, they tried to get rid of me, but Denmark did it, you guys. There was a great deal of transparency and they've worked really hard on this thing. It's a fabulous project for downtown Terre Haute. It's going to make a tremendous amount of difference for the community. I've just had people come and say, you know, I went to the Shrine Fish Fry a couple weeks ago and they were asking, are we going to get this convention center? We can have the Shrine Convention here, you know, we can have the, and a lady said the Eastern Star will meet here, and the firefighters think they can get the firefighters' convention here. So this will bring a lot of people into our community. I talked to some folks in Indiana State who think that if we have people come here to conventions, they'll see the university across the street, and they may never have had the opportunity to think about sending their kids or their grandkids to Indiana State. So I think it's got all kinds of benefits to it. And this is a heavy lift for Vigo County, for the Vigo County government, you know? I mean, when these guys added these figures up, I thought apoplexy, you know? It's a big deal for us, you know? So, and that was a part of it, you know, the other folks on the county council thinking about putting this, you know, in the city, well, what's the city going to do? What's the city going to do, you know? Well, the city, I know you guys are going to be in this thing, and it's going to be tremendous for the whole county, it's going to be tremendous for the city. So, you know, I think, I think they're going to, I think they tried to be transparent on it, and it's been, it's been hard at this last part of it to get the numbers all worked out. And I particularly think Steve has done a tremendously good job to help us make it work. So I commend all of them for everything that they've done. We want this thing to go, it's going to be, it's going to be tremendous for the community. George, you're going to get a lot of business from it.
I sure hope so.
I think you ought to put in a little extra. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment or concern, question from council? Yes.
Every project like this reaches a point where the funding needs to be lined up, or you have difficulty getting providers of the services you need and the construction bids that you want to come. I mean, that's just the way the construction industry works. And we're at that point today with this interlocal agreement to just kind of tie everything together. Every, I believe everybody else has already signed off?
The county council is considering this in committee on April 25th. It may be eligible for final adoption of their meeting.
So they're just, they're just trying to line all this up and all parties need to agree to play and before they can put it out to bid and go. And before anybody would bid, this needs to work. And that, that's why we're here, that's why it's on our agenda. I yield.
Anyone else?
Hold a question.
It's been seconded that we approved Resolution 2, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you very much, council, and thank you, Todd. You know, we're, we enjoy a great working relationship and I lost my cool a little bit, that we're both passionate about what we feel, but I consider you a very dear friend and we always work together well.
Actually, Steve, I saw something tonight I didn't think ever happened, which is you losing your cool a little bit. We still have before us Resolution 3, 2019. I believe we've already asked for comment from the public, so I will turn that into council. And does anyone have any question or concern, they'd like to raise a comment on Resolution 3, 2019? This is the interlocal agreement, for those of you not in the interlocal agreement, for the joint financing of the convention center.
Madam President?
Yes.
If there's no other questions or comments, I make the motion we approve Resolution 3, 2019.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nasser and seconded by several people, I believe I heard, Mr. Elliott, that we approve Resolution 3, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item of business.
A review of Sycamore Hotel Partners CF-1 form for Resolution 3, 2010. Should have a copy in front of you. Before you, you have the CF-1 form under actual, it shows originally estimated, was 29, they have an attached C to their SB1, they currently have 24 employees.
Excuse me, is it the opposite of that? Said they're estimated 24 and they have 29, or am I looking at the wrong?
Oh, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry. 24 were estimated on the original SB1, 29 actual.
Okay, thank you.
There is an attachment to the return that states this property is affiliated with Fox Hotel Partners, which is also on the agenda tonight, which also owns Home2 Suites. Since the employees could work at either location, the Home2 Suite employee is being reported along with Holiday Inn employees on the CF-1.
Say that again, please, Michelle.
So I don't know if the council, most of the council remembers these two abatements. So you did Sycamore Hotel first, which was the one right by McDonald's on Market. And then a few years later, you did the other one, which is just north of the first one. They've always considered them combined employees because they can have them work at either place. So if you want to look at Fox Hotel Partners, which was previously Sycamore Hotel Partners, you will see that they estimated 30, actual is 29. So that's why there's 29 on both and the same amount of salaries.
And if I'm correct, the action that we are to take on this is either a motion that we are in substantial compliance, or they are in substantial compliance, is that correct?
Your actions are in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance?
I guess I'll, I'll ask Michelle. I know there's a side note on the bottom of this, that the assessed value represents the most recent assessment data, which is January 1st, 2018. Did they have any additional comments on the assessment part of it?
Are you on the Sycamore or on the Fox?
I'm sorry, I'm on Sycamore.
The Sycamore. On assessed value, represents the most recent assessment, which was, they filed this March 8th, I don't know if they did not receive, there was no other documents on the assessed value.
That's, this is where one of my concerns are with these, is because I'm not worried about the employees as much, well, I am worried about the employees because that's Josh. Let me re-quote myself, but if you look at these assessed values, when they come to us for abatements and stuff, they're telling us, you know, what the project is going to be, what it should be assessed at. And then you look to see what the actual assessment is, that's tax dollars we're losing. I find that concerning. And that's not, that's not Sycamore Hotel Partners part, that's part of the assessment part. Those are a lot of tax dollars we're losing. Just something to think about. I yield.
Madam President?
Yes.
Michelle, do we have any other tax abatements that are tied together in this confusing way? Where the employees, the same employees count for both?
Other than DADC Unison, where the, the one company has gotten multiple abatements? No. For two, for two separate buildings with two different names on the companies, no, I've not seen this.
Yeah.
You may remember Mr. Lynn was here last year, I think, or a year before you, the council called him in for hearing, do you remember that?
I do.
There was one discussion that one of the hotels is going to be sold. And I'm assuming it's Fox, because it was supposed to be the newer hotel.
Which is not finished yet, right?
Fox is still...
It's still under construction.
Yeah.
It opens up at the end of tomorrow.
So technically, this form, they should not have probably completed, they should have just sent a letter saying that construction was still going on. And it would have been less confusing.
And that's for the second one?
Correct.
For the second, yeah.
But when, but when the abatement for the second one was granted, it did have correlation to the other hotel.
So if the second one is sold when it's finished, then are they obligated to hire 30 people to keep the tax abatement?
I've been asking that question, and I'm told when it's actually sold, we'll have to delve into it then.
We'll figure it out then.
So should we have them come in once it's sold, or?
Yes.
Next year.
Not now.
Okay.
I know it's a little out of order to be talking about both of them, but since they're...
Since they tied it together.
Yeah, they tied it together. But just, okay, so confining ourselves to the one that's been, that we're supposed to be talking about.
The Sycamore Hotel.
Sycamore Hotel Partners. They appear to be in substantial compliance, so I'd make that motion.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nation and seconded by Councilperson Devon, that these CF-1 from Sycamore Hotel Partners, Form RS-3, 2010, is in substantial, is in substantial compliance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So found. Now we are at the review of the Fox Sycamore Hotel Partners CF-1 Form RS-12, 2015.
Which they're not open?
And this one is not open?
If I may?
Yes.
It's not going to hurt anything if you say they're in substantial compliance, because this is an annual review. So it will be back before you next year.
So we'll hold them accountable next year when they're...
So your position is we do not need to take action on this one?
They took the time to file it. You could not take action, that's your discretion?
Madam President?
Yes.
Has the clock started ticking on this abatement yet?
No.
So they filed the paperwork, even though it's not finished, and it doesn't matter because they're not getting anything knocked off of their taxes.
Correct.
Because it hasn't come online.
Correct.
Okay.
So again, the council can just decide to take no action. No one has to make a motion, we just adjourn the meeting. And it's fine to do that.
I have one question. So if they, if they sell this right after they open it, is that what they're planning on doing, is that what you're saying?
I do not remember Mr. Lynn, sorry.
If they do, does that mean they have to reapply for an abatement, or they get the abatement that was already given?
There's a lot of documents they'll have to fill out. There's state forms for transferring the abatement to the new owner.
Okay.
There is a procedure in place to do that.
Clarify it. Nothing?
Well, while we, well, I guess my statement would be that, while it's hard to get people to file these sometimes, and we hate to discourage someone from potentially doing that, that it would be in fact premature to take action on this, since there's nothing going on. So I, with the permission of the other city council people, I would say that is a reasonable way to go.
Since I will give you that permission, I will move to adjourn.
It's been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Devon, that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Good job.